Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting approximately 30 to 40 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to four questions, but that will depend upon the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during the exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered, or something they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. So, we're gonna get started. Today, we're speaking with John Mahoney, one of the four candidates for Select Board in the Plymouth Town election. John, thank you so much for joining us today.
My pleasure, Julie.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a little preamble before the first question. Many people who responded to our inquiry for questions that they would like to have the candidates answer included questions about the behavioral integrity of some members of many different boards and committees. How and where information is communicated was also a problem that was brought up. So, based on that, question number one. The behavior of members of the Select Board have come under scrutiny over the past few years. Many "debates" on multiple topics have taken place over social media and in venues that are not an official nature. In 2013, a procedure was established governing the use of official town social media accounts, as well as guiding principles of conduct and decorum for all town employees, board and committee members, town meeting members, and anyone else involved in the town's governance. Do you believe that these policies and procedures need an update for 2022? What would you base that on? And what would you recommend for guidelines and standards in regards to communicating in general, and specifically via social media or other non-sanctioned platforms?
So, you know, when you have members who are in elected position, it's difficult to enforce such rules. So, I just came from an event, and I was discussing, I was in, you know, a small group of people, four of us, and I made a joke. And I said that I was gonna balance the town's budget on a new tax, and it was gonna be a Facebook tax. And that if you put inaccurate information out there in Facebook or social media, and the person, one of the other people in the circles said, "My God, we'll balance the budget overnight." So, I think ultimately what we're talking about here in social media will be one of the downfalls of the Republic of the United States of America. It is just a complete cesspool. I have the ability to go in there if and when somebody, you know, tags me or references me, and if it's inaccurate information, I can go in there and say, "Jeez, A didn't happen. This is B happened," and explain why. And then the ability to get out. It's, you know, it's just, it's a universe that, you know, you wanna believe that it's there to disseminate accurate information, but it doesn't. And, you know, you can sit here and update all the rules you want at the local level, but ultimately, you know, obviously, you know, we're talking about free speech here, so some people, no matter what, are gonna go onto Twitter, the other one is Instagram and Facebook, and I don't know what else is out there, and say what they're going to say. So, some of the things I see are frightening, you know, obviously from some elected officials and from the public. And it's unacceptable. And, you know, it's an unfortunate, it's a negative, you know, it's a bad reflection on our society, but that's, you know, that's where it is. And obviously, at a higher level, I mean, look at, we know that Russia has done with respect to trying to influence the last two presidential elections here by, you know, having what the, apparently bots go on there and, you know, put false information out there about, you know, certain candidates and trying to drive certain demographics to the left or to the right.
So, how can the little town of Plymouth better communicate through proper channels or sanctioned channels so that information that people really need to know is out there in a timely manner? I think one of the problems is that there's no set way of communicating what is happening at Town Hall unless you watch the meetings. And a lot of people don't have the time to watch the meetings. So, how do you communicate what's going on and what is on the plates of the Select Board, or the Town Manager, or any of the boards or commissions, in a place where people can believe the accuracy of it?
Well, I believe that the town of Plymouth has their own, you know, Facebook link and Twitter page, so, you know, that data, you know, through the Town Manager, in conjunction with the Chair and the Select Board, they should be putting information out there saying, you know, "This happened today," or "This is going to happen next week." And, you know, there should be some generic posts in multiple forums about what is occurring, what has occurred, and, you know, potentially what can occur. You know, I do know that one of the current Select Board members does a great job of posting, you know, a copy of the agenda for the Select Board every week, and, you know, gets that out there, multiple, I don't know what these places are, sites, or, I don't know what these things are called on Facebook, you know, the different-
Pages, the different pages and groups, yeah.
And puts that out there so that, you know, the public does have a higher level of knowledge of when the meetings occur, when they start, and what the discussion will be, and what the agenda items are. But, no, you're right, and then obviously, you know, I served on the Board before, and I first got on the Board in '08. And if you go back to '08, back at the Old Town Hall on 11 Lincoln Street, if there was a hot button issue at that meeting, you could look out to a table over here, and you'd have, you would have, the Quincy Patriot Ledger would have a reporter there, the Brockton Enterprise, WATD, and the Old Colony Memorial. So, for hot button items, you could have three to six members of the press sitting at a table covering that story, and then you would read it in hard copy. And obviously, here it is a decade later, you talk about how, you know, our society evolves, more of this content is online, and not, you know, people aren't buying newspapers anymore, or at least listening to that content, or reading that content online. But now, now in today's world, you have, I think you have a reporter from the WATD, and sporadically somebody from the Old Colony. And that's predominantly it. And so, it's just, it's unfortunate, Julie, it's just a different world.
So, does it, does the onus fall back then on the town to make sure that the information that is out there is accurate?
Absolutely, but I think the, I think, I wanna believe that for the most part, the information being put out there through the official town channels is accurate, but I can't... How is the town going to monitor an individual who goes outside of proper town channels and just puts something, lays something out there on social media?
So, if something is said on social media that is totally incorrect, would it be who the Select Board or whatever, whoever was said about, to say, "To get the full answer to this question, please visit this site," versus having a back-and-forth?
In today's world, I don't know how, I mean, we're gonna hire a staff member to just monitor social media for inaccurate posts? I mean, I can't go to that point.
Right, well, it's been talked about, a communications person being hired for the town? That's their, I would assume, one of their jobs would be to make sure information is communicated in an effective way, and be able to maybe offset what goes on in social media.
Yeah, sure. So, I don't know, I'm gonna pay somebody a full-time salary to sit there and stay on social media all day, looking for inaccurate information coming to, from-
Well, I think it might be more to be proactive about all the information that should go out. I think that's probably more what the objective would be, and that would make sense. Now, do you think Select Board members are treated fairly by the public? I mean, you were one.
Sure. Well, you know, you're in the business of trying to make everybody happy. Guess what? You can't do that. Okay, so at the end of the day, you're trying to make decisions that I wanna believe are in the best, especially long-term interest of the community. That's what you're trying to do. And, you know, it's a policy direction board, and, you know, you have one-fifth of the vote, and you're trying to, you know, get the, you know, get the town to tack in one direction as opposed to attacking in another direction. Listen, occasionally, I do go onto some of those pages. I mean, you know, you have, it seems to me it's the same 15 to 30 people screaming over each other, you know? And the majority of the time, it's over inaccurate information, it's speculative, you know, and it's not factual data. And you just, I mean, you've gotta develop a thick skin, you can't allow that stuff to bother you. And then when I see something particularly, you know, egregious, I do go in there and say, "Hey, individual, you're wrong, this is what happened, this is what I did, you got any questions?" What's it called, IM?
Yeah.
PM? Private messaging, or whatever it is. And for the most part, they do.
Okay, and then you can work that out between the two of you. Yeah, okay. Okay, question number two. On April 5th, Select Board Chair Richard Quintle penned a letter outlining the events that led up to the Select Board's March 29th 3-2 approval vote on supporting an RFP, Request for Proposal, from Boston South Real Estate and Development LLC to begin their due diligence in determining the best use of the Plymouth County Woodlot. Mr. Quintle stipulates that, quote, "Since this is just the beginning of a long public process, that the Select Board does not specifically endorse any specific use of the woodlot at this time," end quote. Now, many residents have mixed feelings about this statement, as the presentation by the Boston South group clearly outlined a thoroughbred racetrack as one of the components of the development of that land. How do you feel this entire process has been handled so far? And what are your feelings on the proposed usage of that land?
So, there's probably two dozen reasons why I am against it. And number one is that I have a problem with that form of government owning the land. That 110-acre site should be owned by the Town of Plymouth.
So, just to clear, so in case people don't know, it's owned by the county, Plymouth County.
It's owned by the Plymouth County Government. You have an entity with a $10 to $14 million budget. I have had these conversations over the years with former Chairs, with obviously the, you know, the Town Manager, who is no longer with us, and probably even the individual who has the job now. You know, the Town of Plymouth pays the county $200,000 to $300,000 a year to be a member, and we've always said, "What do we get in return?" So, when you figure that one out, let us know. I have a problem, the second reason, I have a problem with the county government telling the town, "We don't have to abide by your zoning regulations. We have the power to circumvent that."
But they do, technically, correct? Don't they, technically, doesn't, don't they report to the state and not to the towns?
I think, I think that in a perfect world, maybe if it was a governmental need, and they were actually doing something that provided a service to the government, but in something like this, where this is, government is not in the, shouldn't be in the casino or horse track business, that something like this, you would have to go to the local community and, you know, go to the planning board, and then if you need some relief from local zoning, go to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
But, now, we know that that does not have to happen in this case. So, one of the things that obviously happened at the Select Board meeting this week was there's going to be a question on the ballot. What do people feel about, do you, I think it's, do you support a thoroughbred horse track in Plymouth? So, they'll find out, and now it's a non-binding referendum, it's a non-binding question, it doesn't really matter, other than it will, it'll tell what the people think.
But it won't.
Why? Why do you say that?
So, a question like that is basically the equivalent of saying, let's put a question on the ballot, saying, "Should the Town of Plymouth distribute free turkeys for next Thanksgiving, along with cranberry sauce and some stuffing and sweet potato pie?" It's the same question, okay? So, 20 years ago, there was a non-binding question to say, "Do you want offshore casino, a floating casino that would leave from Cordage Park and go out into the Atlantic Ocean, and we'd have gambling there?" They put that to the ballot, it passed overwhelmingly, and nothing happened. And then-
It was four, people said, "Yes, we'd do it."
Correct, correct.
But we never got a vote that went, okay?
Correct, and then May of '08, obviously, there was another question, said, you know, "Do you want Hollywood, do you want a movie studio to come into Plymouth, Massachusetts?" That passed 88 to 12, okay? The fascinating thing to me is, especially on this new one, you're voting on something, you have no idea what the financial ramifications are, and they are significant. And the taxpayers are gonna subsidize. Your taxes aren't gonna go down, they're gonna go up increasingly because of this. So, you're voting on something, you're just taking the temperature of something, so it's probably gonna pass 70 to, you know, 30, or something like that. Okay, how do you vote on something where you have no data that tells you how it's gonna affect you financially? And that's what everybody wants to know. What am I paying in property taxes, and what am I getting in return for it? So, you're gonna, I mean, you know, I gave you my fir-, my first answer was, county government shouldn't own the land. Second answer was, I have a problem with them believing they can circumvent the zoning laws in the community. And the last answer is, you're gonna be taxed out of your home. So, in between, you know, there's another 15 to 20 answers there. The traffic impacts, who's paying for the infrastructure? Where's the water coming from? Who's paying for the wastewater system? How many incremental lights you gonna pay for? Is that money coming from the state or the feds?
Well, isn't that all part of this process that they're supposed to go through over the next couple of years?
In theory, so I think what happened here was that the county got $450,000 of free money, you know, $150,000 a year for three years. So, you know, that group can go off and vet this and come back, but it is another get-rich-quick scheme where the, you always, the taxpayers get caught, they always get left paying for the bill, that's what happens. You have a textbook example. You probably currently, right now, have the greatest example in New England of that happening. You were told, you were told back in the late '60s, "We're gonna build a power plant," okay? Jobs, everybody's gonna live for free, and the federal government's gonna take, spend fuel out of here. None of that happened. Your taxes skyrocketed, you took in $1 to $2 billion in tax revenue from the plant, you have nothing to show for it, you are now the host community of a nuclear waste dump, your compensation is zero, and the job sum, I think they're down to 40 to 60 people decommissioning the thing on the site, and within five years, there'll be nobody there. So, you were told you were gonna live for free, the opposite happened. That's what happens in these situations.
All right. Gotcha. Question three. Taxes. A single tax rate for personal and commercial use, commercial development.
Is that a question, by the way? Is that a question? That first sentence, a single tax for personal?
No, there was a single tax rate for personal and commercial use. Residential, I'm sorry, residential, right, we don't have two tax rates. Question three. Taxes. A single tax rate for residential and commercial use, commercial development, apartment and condominium development, the work of the Plymouth Area Economic Foundation. All of these issues are tied together but have varied departments and boards and committees working on different aspects of them. This doesn't seem to be an efficient method of doing business. Is there a way to combine these silos of effort into a collaborative project-based working group that hones in on a specific project and works together? Do you believe that combining the efforts of many departments, boards, and committees with a singular goal and objective would be a far better use of time and resources, and ultimately, a more efficient way to create positive outcomes? If so, please give me an example of what initiative might work using this method.
So, I think what happened is, what we have here is there's a false narrative or a misconception that Plymouth is anti-business. In my opinion, and I think I can back this up with the data, you haven't had a revenue problem in the community since the plant showed up, which was New Year's Day of 1972. You've never gone for a two-and-a-half override. And so, Proposition 2 and 1/2 says that you can take your tax levy up 2.5% a year, plus whatever new growth you get. It doesn't discriminate. It doesn't say new growth that is only industrial-commercial. It says any new growth. So, the problem is, in the last 50 years, you've added $8 billion in residential development, 6.5, give or take, in traditional. You know, I live on Whiting Street or a regular cul-de-sac, and then I think the Pine Hills, the quote-unquote "empty nester over 55," I think they're in the 1.4 to 1.5 billion range. So, you have 8 billion in 50 years. You have another 2 to 5 billion of residential growth in the queue for the next 20. So, this question has come up over the years, because the perception is, is because the taxes keep going up, we must be anti-business. You're not. You've, you have pretty much allowed anything that has wanted to come to this community in the door, okay? I don't know what has not made it here. So, and I've heard all the stories over the years. You know, you have a planning board, these people go in front of the planning board, if they need some relief from the current zoning laws, they go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, okay? So, I think what you have is this perception that, you know, the community is against development, they're not. So, what happened is, you know, the worst thing that happened was the plant showed up. You, instantaneously, the plant took up 50% of the tax levy. So, when they showed up, they instantaneously, overnight, you went from 20% industrial-commercial to 70. You're now down to 16, okay, because of the 8 billion. So, you're to the point now that you're probably gonna end up in the 94 to 98 range by the year 2040 of residential development, and the other 2 to 6% is gonna be personal property, industrial and commercial. Commercial, the Hanover Mall was an anchor on the sell show for years, 80% of it has been demolished, it's coming back residential, quote-unquote, mixed-use. If you've been up to the Independence Mall lately, okay? 10 years ago, I had somebody tell me that, "Jesus, too bad that the Independence Mall was in a little further south, we would've gotten that tax, those tax dollars." And I told that person, "The town dodged a bullet, you don't want that." I was in the office of the Kingston Town Manager a decade ago, their largest taxpayer was the Independence Mall, and they were paying at the time 1.3 to 1.4 million a year, and they wanted a reduction in their taxes of $400,000 to $500,000. Commercial is going the way of the dodo, and we are way behind the curve. So, you can look out at Commerce Way, they can't make money anymore with brick-and-mortar retail, what are you doing? You're going residential. Look at Home Depot Drive, need to make money, we're going residential, okay? That's the problem. So, this question has been asked over the years because of a false narrative. For 50 years, you're probably the most pro-economic development community in New England. You've never had to go for a two-and-a-half override. In '05, you passed a $200 million long-term debt exclusion under Proposition 2 and 1/2, that's it. But you've never had to go for a two-and-a-half override, like virtually every other community in Plymouth County, because you, quote-unquote, "Have this unlimited amount of new growth coming in," which is predominantly residential. And that allows you to go from year to year without going to the voters and saying, "Hey, gee, we need, we need a two-and-a-half override of $3.5 million this year for a year, and if we don't get that, we're gonna have to lay off X amount of police, fire, DPW, and teachers." So, there's a perception out there, I completely disagree with it. Are there a few things with respect to permitting in Town Hall, where maybe we can streamline it? Sure, you can tweak a few things, maybe help people out, absolutely. But at the end of the day, any new growth that you have, if it's going in the general fund, your taxes are still going up.
Okay, so I guess my question was more, a big, let's say a big economic development project for commercial comes before the town, and it has to go through all the different boards that have to have their hand in it. My question is, does it make sense for the whole group to decide, you know what, this is something we all believe would be good for the town? So, you work together collectively on this one project, maybe two or three people from each board committee that would be, that was more my question, is being, and that also fosters an environment of working together, and transparency, you know what each other's doing every step of the way.
Right, so-
Shoot, shoot a hole in that theory.
So, a great, a great example is where we currently are today. So, the Plymouth Industrial Development Corporation was founded in 1962, this quasi-public-private entity, to foster economic development. It expired in 2012, 50 years, but it's still going today, and here we are at year 60. So, in the fall of 17, they presented, I'm sorry, the Economic Development Foundation presented to the Board, and, you know, I asked, "What were the vital statistics?" So, you're looking at 450 acres, and at the time, I think it was 60 corporations, 5,000 jobs.
Right, here, in this-
That's 55 years of consistent public-private investment, okay? You have to have the land, you have to then work with the government or the private sector, you have to come together, you have to provide electricity or power, you have to have water, you have to have wastewater, you have to have roads, okay? So, we're always looking for this get-out-of-jail-free card economically. It, you know, it doesn't exist. So, if you look at Camelot Drive, and if you look at where we currently are, those are textbook examples of sustainable, long-term economic development. Okay, you look at brick-and-mortar retail with respect to commercial, it's over. You gotta figure that out. You got a guy with a shaved head, I think lives in Washington State, he's worth $2 to $300 billion. The guy went into business to drive brick-and-mortar retail out of business. So, it, you know, you've gotta adapt, and government is not good at doing that, whether it's a town, a city, a state, or the federal government. They're all, they're always behind the curve chasing themselves.
So, is there any answer to that for the Town of Plymouth?
To what?
To, you're saying it's almost impossible to do. Well, they did it here, in the industrial park. Can we, can we do another industrial park?
Where's the land?
I don't know.
Okay, so I made a presentation to a committee, I think last fall, it was called, you know, Capitalism and the US Dollar, and how that, with respect to government, okay? We're making a cake, it's an economic development cake, okay? There's certain, you have to go to the cupboard, you have to pull the ingredients out. Land, water, wastewater, power, roads, then you need good fiscal policy. You don't have that at the community level, you don't have that at the state level, okay? Where's the land? And by the way, with respect to water, you're negative one right now. So, you had a new well come on down at Forgers Field, I think two years ago, giving you a million gallons of water a day. That water's already gone, it's already into the system and gone. If you talk to Mr. Beeter, your Director of Public Words, to have the complete level of safety, redundancy in the system, and mitigating risk, you need another well today. That's with no future growth, whether it's residential, industrial, or commercial. And the question is, where's that well's gonna come from? And we don't know where. So, the problem is, Julie, if you look at Boston, a century ago, they went out to, they created the Quabon Reservoir. They had 5,000 people forcibly removed from their homes in five little communities, and they put up a dam. And they created this body of water, and they surrounded it with 150 square miles of land, where human beings are not allowed. And then it goes by gravity in a tunnel to Boston. If it stopped raining tomorrow, the Quabon has enough water for six years. Public safety, public health, and economic development. If you look at Brockton, 60, 65 years ago, the Commonwealth, through a law, gave them complete control of Silver Lake, which is the seventh largest naturally occurring body in Massachusetts, okay? So, Silver Lake is surrounded by open space, and then a pipe drive sends that water over to Brockton. And then Brockton went out and said, "Okay, now we don't need any trees," because they're all in Pembroke, Kingston, Halifax, and Plimpton. So, but here in Plymouth, and down on Cape Cod, you have to have your own land. And a well is, I don't know, 1 to 300 acres. So, you're getting to the point of, it's basically, you better, you need one to two, three future well sites, or the end is, it's not gonna end well. No pun intended. And going back to 2016, there was a drought in 2016, one of the wells in the southern end of the community went down to nothing multiple times. And I asked the department head, "What did you do at that point in time?" And they said, "We crossed our fingers and hoped that the public didn't figure it out." I mean, you're really on the precipice of, if you don't get that one figured out, it's just, it's not good.
Okay. We have seven minutes left. Let me give you a last question. Let's talk about Plymouth's current form of government. What do you believe are its current strengths and drawbacks, and do you think it's sustainable, given all the challenges that we're facing in this town in the coming years?
Yes, it's absolutely sustainable. So, when I told you that I presented, I presented to the Charter Commission, I don't know, October, November, so I did a six or seven slide presentation on, so I called it Capitalism and the US Dollar, and it's basically, you know, how you handle money, are you handling money in a responsible, long-term manner? And in the late '90s, the community had a single A-plus bond rating. A few, in the early 2000s, you went to a double A-negative, and I forget, I think, I don't know, '08 or '20, '10, you went to a double A. And then I think in '16, you went to a double A-plus. You've gotten three bond ratings in the last 20 years. A-plus. You've gotten three bond ratings in the last 20 years. So that's a significant jump. And then when you top that, when you talk about that upper echelon of bond ratings, now you're up into the, there's only three levels above that. It's triple A-negative, triple A and triple A-plus. And it's only, the last I saw, there was only 28 communities in Massachusetts that have, have accomplished that. Only, only 7 to 8% of the communities.
Okay.
Okay. It's Dennis, Thalmouth, Cohasset, Duxbury.
Yep.
Boston, Lexington, you know, Weston, Wellesley. Do you get my drift?
Yeah. But so people that don't understand what, how that impacts what we're talking about.
It's a credit score.
Okay.
So the analogy I made.
It's good.
That night was, you have a personal credit score.
Yep.
That is the credit score for a community.
Okay.
Irrespective of your form of government.
Okay.
And you've done a bunch of good things in the last 20 years. The audits in the last decade have been glowing. You really have your fiscal house in order. You have a, a bunch of stabilization accounts. You have, you know, quote-unquote rainy day funds.
Yep.
You, you eliminated double taxation in 2013. So there's no more general fund subsidy of the enterprise funds that ended, the last fiscal year we did that was FY12.
Yeah.
So that, if you lived in Cedarville, the Pine Hills, Manomet, West Plymouth.
Yep.
And you didn't get town sewer.
Yeah.
You weren't subsidizing it. I, you know, it's unfair that if you live in Cedarville.
Yeah.
Your money is coming out of your pocket to keep my sewer fees down. Inappropriate.
Okay.
So you thought outside the box. You took the meals tax. You, you passed a home rule petition. You didn't allow it to get buried into the, the black hole of the general fund.
Yeah.
You built, you invested in the downtown area, $54 million investment without raising property taxes in the new Town Hall.
Yeah.
Okay? Stuff like that. And I asked, I've literally talked to dozens of people, and I would be firmly on board with a change of government, if you can explain to me how our financial situation improves. And nobody's ever given me an answer.
Okay.
So if you look at the four, four different forms, so I'm going to give you a textbook example. So the auto excise tax.
Yep.
That is a progressive tax. When you own an automobile in Massachusetts, in your particular community, you go to the local Town Hall to pay the tax.
Right.
Government doesn't look at you and say, what's your sexual orientation? What's your race? What's your religion?
Right.
How tall are you? What color are your eyes?
Right.
Okay? You're a human being.
Yep.
You own an automobile, a motor vehicle.
Right.
There's a tax. They want to know three things. The make, the model and the year.
Right.
That's it. And the computer spits out a number. That's a progressive tax.
Okay.
So in theory, that tax was supposed to cover infrastructure or roads. It doesn't do that. So in 2017, the Plymouth Select Board, we rectified that. And we started to wean the auto excise tax out of the general fund to proactively invest in roads.
Yep.
So now, that's hypocritical to charge you a tax for roads that doesn't go to roads.
Right.
That wouldn't happen in the regular private sector. Okay?
Correct.
So four different forms of government in Plymouth County.
Yep.
You got one, Brockton, mayor, city council.
Yep.
Where's the auto excise tax? It's in the general fund. Now we're going to go to Bridgewater. You've got a town council, strong town manager. Where's the auto excise tax? It's in the general fund. Now we're going to go to Halifax, Kingston, Duxbury, Pembroke, and some of those other small, open town meeting. Town manager, town administrator, open town meeting.
Right.
Where's the, where's the auto excise tax? It's in the general fund. So, you know, irrespective of the form of government.
Yep.
They all have the same fiscal policy.
Okay.
Nobody can think longer than 365 days at a time. And that's what's wrong with the, the, the community, the state and the country. There's no long-term fiscal plan.
Okay. So in your last two minutes, talk about what you would do as a select board member. And some of the things that you've brought up today, are they impossible to do? Or can you start working on them?
Well, my, my big thing was, obviously, the people that know me is that the, I call it, I, what I, what I refer to it as general fund socialism. Is that, you know, when you believe that all new growth should end up in this, in this black hole of the general fund.
Right.
That's the term that I use for it. It's bizarre. And the inability to think longer than a year at a time. So I've always been a huge advocate of creating an outside of the general fund infrastructure fund. Because what happens is, you show up at these points in the future and you need a school. And we hem and haw over raising property taxes to invest in a school. You don't have to do that. And the single greatest example of that today in New England is Plymouth Town Hall. So what you have to do is, you effectively created your infrastructure fund when you did that. You need to continue to make deposits into that fund, strategic deposits.
Right. But that was done through the meals tax. Correct.
Correct.
Right.
But you can put other things in there.
Okay.
Okay? You can do that. You can segregate out. But you have to do it when the new business comes on. Like, I'll give you textbook examples, like the marijuana.
Yep.
Okay? All of that ended up in the general fund.
Okay.
It's, it's just like your retirement fund as, as an individual.
Okay.
You need to make strategic investments in that. And I can tell you right now, in the next five to 10 years, even though, I mean, easily you could have asked me about redistricting and what's currently going on with the schools and, you know, you know, a smaller student population and the potential for moving schools around and closing a school.
Right.
Gary Maesterson had a.
You have 10 seconds.
And then this is it?
Yeah. You're just about at the end of your 40 minutes.
Okay. All right, that's it. It's great to be here. Thank you.
So what would you, what would you say as far as, it's you and three other people for two spots on the Select Board?
Right.
So why you?